Good evening and welcome to the Wenham Select. Good evening and welcome to the Wenham Select Board Meeting of April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll call the meeting together at six thirty-three. In attendance is Gary Cheesman.
Diane Buco?
I can't make sure.
Before we begin, just a short statement. Harriet Davis, leader, mentor, volunteer, and lifelong proponent of the town Wenham passed away on Saturday, April fifteenth. Harriet's efforts on behalf of the town were wide-ranging and extraordinary. A preliminary check of town records show that Harriet served on at least twenty-three committees, including the Finance Advisory Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Historic District Commission, and Cemetery Commission. She continued her family's long tradition of service to the town as she followed both of her parents onto the Board of Select. Harriet was the president of the Wenham Village Improvement Society. The town Wenham will remember Harriet's great contributions and extends its deepest sympathies and condolences to the Davis family. Thank you. On with the agenda then. Any, uh, hands up for public input?
No.
No, alright. Then, uh, over to Steve for announcements.
This is the rain barrels are still available for purchase. Again, it's a good deal. It's only eighty-nine dollars and then the Wenham residents get an additional forty dollars off doing that. You can see here how to order, uh, and with the pickup times, ninety-one Grapevine Road, Wenham, Mass. Uh, the deadline is April thirtieth at midnight to order, so if you want one, uh, get on in the next five days. And this is to celebrate Arbor Day, so this is, um, five, I believe it, five families, uh, donated, uh, apple trees that will be planted at Reynolds Farm. We'll be, uh, hosting a, uh, get-together, um, in collaboration with the Food Project, um, to, on, on April twenty-eighth from five to seven. That, that's a, that's a Friday. That's this Friday night, uh, where the, the families who donated the trees will be there, uh, representatives from the Food Project, uh, elected officials from the town, um, will all be there to accept the donations of the trees, uh, so it should be, it should be a good, a good night.
I think there's refreshments there and I believe the Food Project is going to be giving tours.
Okay, yeah, and there will be, you're right, there will be, there will be food and, uh, some light, uh, well, some, some beverages and some light, uh, food. Alright, this is for our Memorial Day activities, Monday, May twenty-ninth of this year, at ten a.m., uh, the Cheeseman Memorial at, uh, Pingree Park, eleven will be the laying of the wreaths at the Civil War Monument and, uh, Veterans Memorial. Eleven Ted, there'll be a parade to the Main Street Cemetery. Uh, the parade will be forming, uh, on the road between the Tea House and the Civil War Monument. And then at eleven forty-five, the ceremony, uh, will begin by the, the flagpole, uh, will begin by the flagpole in the cemetery and Representative, uh, Jerry Priscilla will, will be, uh, will be speaking. Again, refreshments will also be available at the cemetery after the ceremony. And this is the, um, this will be for Flag Day, June fourteenth at six o'clock. This is where you will be able to, um, dispose of your worn, torn-out flags at, at Pingree Park. The Veterans Committee of, uh, Wenham will, uh, dispose the flag properly by burning it in a controlled way. Uh, the, the ti- at the time, it'll begin with a brief ceremony. Um, so, you know, please reach out to us if you have any questions on how to get involved with that.
I guess I got this one. So we have two volunteers in Town Hall that are starting the cataloging and descriptions of all the artifacts and items in, uh, Town Hall. So if anybody out there in the public has particularly information on artwork, posters, the flags, any of the artifacts in Town Hall, we'd appreciate, uh, you sending in that information to us so we can build a proper history in all those items.
Alright, so it's that time of year again, will be, uh, the Select Board will be appointing, uh, individuals to the open seats of, uh, various boards and committees. So here, you, you can see that, uh, there is several openings across a number of boards and committees. So if there's any, any interest to getting involved, uh, incumbents, wenhamma.gov slash volunteer. Uh, just note the incumbents. If you're interested in staying involved, I need to reapply. And letters of interest from the incumbents and also, uh, you know, anyone else in public who would, who would like to, uh, volunteer their time and fill one of these open seats, uh, can be sent and must be received by March, uh, May thirtieth, excuse me.
I think there's the one exception, the, uh, Finance Committee Appointing Committee has a one may deadline for those that are interested.
Is that what? Alright, so one may on, on the Finance Appointing Committee and, right, so send your letter, I believe they go directly to you.
Uh, yeah, and then there's also the, um, the Google Form.
Yes, with Finance Advisory Committee, the, uh, process would be sending directly to, uh, Michelle McGovern. Or, uh, there's a portal on the website through Google Docs, uh, that you can also submit your interest and we will, uh, contact you through that. Alright.
Special Town Election?
Special Town Election, this is from going from three to five, so this was at, uh, Town Meeting, uh, and for, you know, a year ago, the one that just passed, but the year before that, uh, came through the Special Act of legislation. It was placed on the ballot at this most recent election and it passed, so, uh, per the Special Act, we, the town has to host a special election for the election of the two additional seats that, uh, are now available on the Select Board, uh, within ninety days, so this will be held on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Here we've outlined the last date for nomination papers, uh, and then the last date to file, so the, if you're interested, those are some important dates, Tuesday, May twenty-third, you want to obtain your.
So I have to jump in. Um, that, those dates might not be accurate at this point and I believe the date, the last day to file your papers is November, is November, May ninth. So, uh, I've asked our new town clerk, Kirsten, to call the state elections to confirm that, but I believe it's going to be May ninth. I believe, um, that's the only thing I wanted to say. That's the only, the other dates all look okay.
Can I just ask a question? I mean, there's a big difference between May twenty-third and May ninth.
Right. So there's a schedule, there's a, a list and it's by mass general law that you get from state elections that, you go backwards, the date of the election, seven days before that, the warrant for the election has to be posted. Ten days before the election date, you have to have last date of voter registration, which she has there from nine to five. Thirty-five, forty-nine, forty, thirty-five, thirty-three, thirty-five, forty-nine. I can't remember what they all are, but those are the specific dates. So what we do in the clerk world is we make our calendar and then we send it to elections to check it, state elections to check it, because some holidays count and some don't, which is, and it's just easy to make a mistake. So when I was preparing this with Terry before the, I think before Kirsten started, we made up the calendar, sent it to state elections, and it came back with May ninth. And then, uh, Kirsten looked at it and thought it was a different date, so I've asked her to confirm again with state elections. And she'll do that tomorrow and we can post it properly, you know, whatever date it needs to be. So the difference are the two different, the different statutes, different dates, thirty-nine, thirty-five or forty-nine days.
Alright, so, so once we get confirmation of that tomorrow from state elections, we will push this, essentially the same slide out via, you know, as a PDF on, uh, the various social media websites that, that the, uh, the town participates in, uh, we'll have it on the website.
So when's our next Select Board meeting?
The eighth.
Ninth.
Ninth.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, that, I, I'm struggling with this.
So, a few reasons, the reason I believe it's May ninth is because that would mean the last day to withdraw is whatever, and then you have so many weeks to order the ballots, because you can't order the ballots until that's done, and if we wait that long.
I'm not getting hung up in the technicalities of what you're saying. It's that, if the last day is the ninth and our next board meeting is the ninth, and it, I don't personally think it's right to cut off, um, people submitting papers on, on the ninth.
But that's state law.
It's gonna be state law.
It's state law and all, applies to all elections.
Yeah, so then.
Because the, the board itself has no, no role to play in the election.
Right, and the, the special legislation gave us, gave us ninety days, I don't know how we came up with ninety days, to have that special election. So ninety days from the town meeting brings us to July fifth. July fifth is not a good time to have an election and so we tried to do it before that, the last.
Basically went, gave the, for most amount of time possible within state law, without having it on the Fourth of July holiday. And then worked backwards to arrive at these dates. Be very patriotic to have it on.
So, um, I'll just continue, because there are two positions for the Select Board. One is only a two-year and one is a three-year. Nomination papers are really important, you guys, the town has to step up, let's get some candidates here and hopefully if we get a, a good group of people that want to run for these positions, maybe the league would do another candidate tonight or maybe even in person. Just, it's gonna be, it's a big deal for Wenham. We should really come all out for that.
Okay. Alright, town administrators update?
Okay. Yeah, so I got.
There's all my stuff.
I have a few things today, so we got, um, so I, I was speaking with, before I went on vacation, Sally, um, Kearns, Representative Sally Kearns called and she's gonna try to get us reimbursed for, if you remember, we put about fifty-three thousand dollars into the fire department's operational budget to fund kind of the core group of radios they need. I believe it's about eleven radios. Um, so she's gonna try to get us, uh, on the, on, on Healy's most recent budget, she's gonna try to get us reimbursed on that, so that would be, that would be nice if that came through. Uh, we got our first opioid abatement, um, funds distribution of forty-eight hundred dollars. So that will be this year's. I believe we qualify for some smaller distributions, uh, in future years. So these funds are restricted in their use, similar to ARPA funds and things like that. They have to be used, uh, in conjunction with, um, you know, essentially fighting and assisting people who have, uh, you know, who, 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 you know, been addicted to opiates or, or things of that nature. So probably will be, likely I'll be requesting a future time to either form some sort of, uh, subcommittee or at least will probably form an internal committee, with probably myself and Public Safety and Board of Health and kind of get some input, find out the best way that these monies can be spent where there is restricted and, uh, report back to the Select Board as to, you know, how we, you know, a suggestion on how these could be best spent to, uh, be most impactful to, to the residents. Um, so Route ninety-seven, their state plans on start in braving in mid-May. There was a letter, oh, there was a letter to that, sent out to all the residents that were, live directly on ninety-seven. Additionally, um, we've made some, um, social media posts and, uh, website posts. And they, we are, for Rich Souza has coordinated, our DPW director has coordinated to have two light, uh, signboards that will live on both ends of ninety-seven that will be broadcasting the most, uh, up-to-date information. Uh, so we're trying to get the word out, see if we can think of, you know, a better way to help the residents navigate that, because I'm sure there'll be some closures in one lane backups and.
But there'll always be a way through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, so we're trying to get the word out so people, you know, aren't surprised.
That mailing or did we send the mailing?
We sent it.
Yeah, I thought that was very good.
And, um, so then, oh, ARPA update, so I don't know if you noticed, but around Puker School, over school vacation, there was a bunch of ADA ramps put in, so that was our ARPA funds. I know Rich Souza has been working closely with the principal over at Puker School to kind of identify the, you know, the best path that pedestrians and students should be taking to the school's safest path. Uh, have ADA compliant ramping, uh, and access, uh, through the entire way. And this is kind of how they came up with, um, you know, with, what they came up with was the best path in those, so that's the ARPA, ARPA money, uh, working for us. Yeah, the fire, also the fire department equipment, I know we talked, they actually, uh, it's on the ground, they received the jaws of life. So they've been testing that and they seem very happy with the purchase.
I think they posted that on Facebook too, on their Facebook site, yeah.
And then, uh, oh, the one other, oh, the, uh, so Verizon, is it Verizon wants to move a poll? Yeah, National Grid wants to move a poll, so we need to coordinate a hearing. It'll be part of the Select Board meeting, probably, unless anyone has any objections, I think we're gonna go to shoot for the twenty, the, the twenty.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third. If that, if that works, there's some posting requirements because it's a hearing, we gotta get it two weeks, we have to get it to, uh, Salem News, I believe, a week ahead of time for the legal notice, has to go out in the papers. So there's some statutory required posting requirements that we need to get out in front of, but if that sounds alright, probably be a representative from National Grid will be in attendance to speak to the public and Select Board.
Is that the poll that you would want it, that someone had wanted to move or fix? It's not this one out here, no.
No, it's on Burley Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, well, yeah, they wanna, they wanna move it for their own.
Reasons, of course.
In their processes, they have to hold a public hearing.
They also held the, the scenic trees, public hearing, didn't National Grid, is that?
That's back on the thirteenth, yes.
Oh, we had the, the audit, the other one is, uh, we got the audit back finally, a little late. They've had, been suffering, by the powers of government, has been suffering from staffing difficulties, just like everybody else. Uh, but like, you know, we just want to commend Jamie Cologne, um, publicly, she did a really good job, uh, particularly in the management letter where they, uh, where they comment on internal controls in the Finance Department, uh, the prior year, so that would be, uh, twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we got written up for, uh, not maintaining and adhering to internal policies. Uh, failure to, uh, have internal controls over cash reconciliations, investments, and tying to the financial ledgers. Uh, and then the current status for the update that the Finance Director has worked, tried, what worked and hired a new treasurer, establish a formal and timely monthly closing process. Cash has been reconciled monthly and reconciling items are identified and supported appropriately. The Finance Office has also established and integrated policies and procedures, uh, as well as manuals to support these processes and, and it is, is adhering to proper internal control procedures.
Awesome.
So, you know, I think that's great.
Yeah, so.
That goes from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two, so, okay.
So, you're looking back, so two thousand and twenty-two is FY twenty-three.
Right.
So there would be the, the fiscal year, well, we're in FY twenty-three, so it'd be the fiscal year that just closed on June thirtieth of last summer.
Okay.
So the bottom line is Jamie came in, uh, took control of the Finance Office and has really turned it around and we're, uh, essentially absolutely clean response this year.
Yeah, there was no, right, there's just one confirm, but the other is no, no other comment, it's that one page. You know, they, they always have the continued recommendation, we continue to recommend to reconcile cash investment on a monthly basis.
So yes, as you say, thank you to Jamie for doing that. Alright, uh, Chair's report, I think, uh, I would emphasize that we have a lot of events coming up. Yeah, we have the, um, this Friday, the Town Orchard. We have the Memorial Day Parade, which we're reinstituting, thank you to Dean Peterson. We have Flag Day and we're anticipating, uh, Martha Brennan will be coming to talk to us about Juneteenth. And then, um, perhaps later in the summer, we can have some sort of a Wenham Day as well. We'll see what we can do. Alright. Diane?
I, I don't have a report, no.
I have nothing.
Alright, then, uh, on to, uh, consent agenda.
Um, I move to approve the open session meeting. Open session minutes dated April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Anything further, otherwise the vote? Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Alright, on to new business. Alright.
Want to go to B?
I want to go to B.
Let's just go right to B.
Alright, so as we established back in, uh, May of twenty-one, after, uh, we got the, uh, membership of the Select Board back up to three, we, uh, agreed to, uh, go into the traditional rotation of the positions. So, uh, tonight I'll step down as the Chair and as the First Order of Business, I would nominate Diane Buco as the Chair of the Select Board for the year forward.
Second.
Any, uh, comments?
Nope.
Alright. Roll call vote then, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes. Congratulations, new chair.
So I will nominate Peter Clay to be the Vice Chair for the year forward.
Second.
Any comments? I know you like to do the minutes. It's hard to let go of the minutes.
We'll take care of that.
Um, your vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous.
Alright, and then I move.
Nominate.
I nominate Gary Cheeseman for, uh, Board Clerk.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, alright.
It's unanimous.
So reorganized, if I had the gavel, I'd pass it over and.
It's all pretend, it's all pretend.
Skip the seat swap for tonight, but you'll have the.
I like this seat.
Middle seat, alright.
Like the corner.
Then over to Diane then for, uh.
Really? Okay, so B, we have a discussion and potential vote to approve a one-day liquor license for the Wenham Museum Attic Treasures Sale. The shop and sip on April twenty-eighth, the same day as Arbor Day, kind of the same time too, from five to seven.
Everybody should make both events.
We should try to do both, if at all possible. Um, and Kirsten, you're here for that. Any wonderful things you want to tell us about the shop and sip?
Thank you. Yes, my name's Kristin Noon and I'm the Executive Director of the Wenham Museum. And the Attic Treasure Sale is a Wenham Museum tradition that dates back over sixty years. So this all volunteer-led event, um, helps raise funds for the institution's mission. Members of the community donate items, household goods, et cetera, to the museum for resale. Um, none of the items in the sale come from the museum's collections. These are all items given from the community. And to kick off the weekend of shopping, um, the volunteers in the museum host a shop and sip event, which is a casual night of shopping with some, you know, cheese and crackers and light hors d'oeuvres. And there is, um, a bar with beer, wine, and soft drinks. And we ask folks to purchase a ticket of twenty dollars a person at the door to come to the event, which also benefits the museum. So usually we have about sixty people. It's a fun night. You can always find something you didn't know you needed at Attic Treasures. So, um, I encourage people to come on down and browse the sale. Um, also, if folks have things they would like to donate, our volunteers are accepting donations at the museum from about nine a.m. to three p.m. until Thursday, so. We get small furniture, like end tables, chairs, art, mirrors, lamps, a lot of china, barware, glassware. We do get collectibles occasionally, like we got a, some antique dolls. We've got, um, some, sometimes we get antique tools that sometimes people like to collect and display in their home. Um, and also folks often donate, you know, Christmas decor and other holiday decor, so you can buy like ornaments and wreaths and things like that too. Jewelry, costume jewelry, I can't believe I forgot that, that's a huge draw to the event, so, yeah.
And there's gonna be hours on Saturday or later for the.
Yes, the sale continues on Saturday and Sunday from ten a.m. until four p.m. Um, the museum will be open, the galleries, it's our hundredth anniversary year, so we have a great special exhibition in place called Celebrating a Century, which highlights the best of our collections. And in the, um, Citizenship section of that exhibition, a member of the League of Women Voters has some photography on display, which is great. So I encourage folks to check that out and we also have a silhouette artist in the building that weekend who's doing portraits, um, of, you know, adults, but probably mostly children, so you can come by and have that done as well, so.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
So, I moved at the Wenham Select Board vote to approve the one-day liquor license for the Wenham Museum on April twenty-eighth from five p.m. to seven.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call vote?
Yes. Gary, yes.
Diane, yes. That's wonderful, thank you very much. Thank you for all the information. And so we also have a, a discussion and potential vote to approve a one-day liquor license for the Celebration of Life at the First Church in Wenham on April twenty-ninth from three to five. Do we have anybody in the audience on that?
I don't know, sorry.
No. Okay, so they have all their information, they filled out the application, same as the museum with their certificate of lib. Okay, so they have all their information, they filled out the application, same as the museum, with their certificate of liability and the serve safe, so. I don't have any problems with this, do you guys have any? I think it's wonderful.
Okay, so I moved that the Wenham Select Board vote to approve the one-day liquor license for cel- for Celebration of Life. At First Church in Wenham on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, from three to five thirty PM.
Second.
Wonderful, I don't think that there's any more conversation, so roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And Diane votes yes, unanimous. So I'm gonna turn it over to Steve so he can tell us, explain to us what this equitous, equitous contracts for the Hamilton Wenham Public Library IT work.
Yep, so this is a project that was voted and approved on the FY twenty-three town meeting, so it would have been. The April of twenty-two town meeting, it was twenty-two for the, for the library. Um, and so it's basically to do three things, it's to upgrade their wireless. Um, so that it has a login, it has a basically a firewall put in so that you can. You have to log in before you can utilize their wireless to help them monitor the wireless usage in the building. Uh, it also separates public and staff network usage. That's a security feature, and, uh, upgrade their switching, which the network switches, uh, that were twenty-three years old. And the total project cost estimated to be about forty thousand dollars, and they received three quotes. From, um, appropriate vendors and went with the lowest bid.
Did they choose the lowest bid just 'cause they, was lowest, or 'cause they liked this better?
Just because, well, they were all qualified companies that they were, would have been happy to do business with, and they went with the most advantageous price.
Great, any questions?
So I moved that the Wenham Select Board vote to approve the equitous contract for the Hamilton Wenham Public Library IT work. For the fiscal year twenty-three capital project.
Second.
Any other questions, comments, no, so let's roll call vote again, Peter?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Diane votes yes, thank you to Kim for sending all that stuff to us, so. We have all that. I can't believe you could just go to the wifi at the library without logging in, I didn't realize that, that's probably. Alright, we're on to E. And we're gonna declare or talk about declaring a two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer as a surplus vehicle, this would be the Fire Chief. Stephen Kavanaugh, is he here or do we?
No, I can, I can speak to, speak to that for him, he, uh, he is wanting to be here tonight, but he is, um. Donating some time, uh, and resources to the autism awareness.
Is that this month?
Tonight, I believe, I believe both, both public safety, uh, policing and fire. Um, but anyways, it's really, it's, it's the former, uh, Fire Chief's admin vehicle. And the, the vehicle has been replaced and is no longer being used. Um, it is, you know, past its useful life and deemed no longer, you know, roadworthy for. Typical municipal purposes, uh, and so we would like the Select Board to declare it surplus so that we can place it on municipal bid, which is a. I guess it's similar to eBay in a lot of ways where interested parties can competitively bid for the product. And get the, you know, the best value back for the vehicle.
And so where does that money go when it comes?
Here we go as a miscellaneous receipts, uh, into the, into the general fund. Which, right, would, would then be part of the free cash certification in the following year.
Okay, I moved that the Wenham Select Board declared the twenty thirteen Ford Explorer a surplus vehicle.
Second.
Any more comments, or any comments at all, nope, roll call vote?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Diane, yes, unanimous on that. So we have to discuss or approve the release of Affordable Housing Trust Funds for the Maple Woods Project, and I think there was some. Um, language in our packet, in the packet, that talked, um, from Margaret through KP Law.
Yeah, the, uh, Attorney Everett from KP Law, Sher- Sherene Everett, uh, issued a legal opinion to the board. Essentially stating that, um, the grant agreement between, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust and the Harbor. Community Partners had a couple stipulations in it, in that, in their interpretation. Um, the, uh, Harbor Light Community Partners has, you know, done their part and supplied the appropriate documents and support. Of the funds, uh, and spending them appropriately, and that, uh, they, they satisfied those conditions and now are asking to release those funds. Specified in the grant agreement for the Maple Woods Project.
That's pretty exciting though, that's moving so fast, well, moving quickly at this time. Any other questions on that? Motion?
Alright, I moved that the Wenham Select Board approved the release of Affordable Housing Trust Funds for Maple Woods Project.
Second.
Without any discussion, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Gary?
Gary, yes.
Diane votes yes, I think that's unanimous again.
Can I just ask?
You can.
What happened to the pictures of us with the shovels?
That was not the groundbreaking, but it was something, right?
It was a groundbreaking.
Yes.
That was Harbor Light, right, that was taking all those photos?
Yeah, they posted on their, their website.
I haven't noticed it. No.
Alright, so I, I'll just go to their website.
But speaking of, of Harbor Light, um, and Maple Woods, they have been posting about the lottery.
Right.
Um, and that we've reposted a few times, but the lottery is open until.
Through the summer.
Through the summer.
But three June.
Okay.
Is the next, uh.
At the library.
Next library, big session, to help get your paperwork done.
Yeah, so reminder to that Wenham residents that this is the time to, to look to get in there.
Perhaps a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to.
Once-in-a-lifetime, don't miss it, looks like a great place. Um, discussion and potential vote on the Wenham Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Grant that I'm gonna ask Steve about, that sounds interesting.
Yep, so this, uh, credit for this one, uh, is, uh, Vicky, Vicky Missone, who is the Energy Manager for. Town of Hamilton and Wenham, uh, she was able to source this, it's essentially a grant to fund a feasibility study in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. For the electric, electrification, uh, of the town hall HVA sys- C system as we go down that path, so I mean, this would do. Couple things, it would, you know, see if it's viable, uh, you know, if, if it's a viable alternative, and if it is, if it's economically viable. And also, um, you know, as the town pursues various green initiatives, that the electrification of, uh, this, if it was to source through renewable. Uh, renewable electric sources, uh, it'd become a, a net zero, uh, impact, so. Um, worth, worth looking into, right, so it's a grant, so it's no cost to the town. We're look, we're gathering quotes and specs to, um, to help accommodate some of the. Findings that were done on the Air Quality Act done by the state a few months ago, uh, so this will just be an additional. We'll look into it and if it makes, you know, economic sense and green sense and it's the direction the town feels they wanna move, maybe we go. Coordinate the two different, two reports together and go electrification route.
So I do have a question on page fourteen. So if I look at the numbers, I mean, the fourteen, nine ninety-eight is in fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
I don't have an answer for you on that, I.
We haven't done it yet, have we?
My thought would be that they, she may have applied in twenty-two, and so the award was. It was an FY twenty-two grant process, and that's why you get the one dollar for twenty-three and one dollar for twenty-four, to give you the full fifteen thousand. But again, I would have to get that answer for you, I don't know off the top of my head.
Leave it up to Ja- Jamie to figure it out.
Yeah, I think that's what it is, 'cause they probably, she probably entered the grant process probably a year and a half ago, but again, that's a, that's a guess. I'll, I'll find that out either way and I'll get that.
But so it doesn't cost us, though, right?
No.
Right. That's interesting.
It's a win-win.
Can't, yeah, can't go wrong.
Alrighty, um, I moved that the Wenham Select Board vote to approve the Wenham Municipal Energy Technical Assistance.
Second.
Roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Gary, yes.
Diane, yes, unanimous. I love making appointments, we have an appointment for Amy Acard, um, is Amy here? It must be easier if I say, Amy, if you're here, unmute yourself, I don't see you're there though, okay. So she went through the portal to, to show interest or sent a letter? An email of interest that she'd like to be involved in the cultural council, that sounds great. I'm hearing something, I don't know, um.
I move that the Wenham Select Board appoint Amy Acard to the Hamilton Wenham Cultural Council for a term beginning April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Great, any comments? Nope, roll call vote, Pete? Gary?
Yes.
Diane votes yes, unanimous on Amy, congratulations, so Amy will be getting probably a notification from the clerk. After through Michelle to come in and get sworn in and take the state ethics exam, test, the ethics exam, test in the open meeting law. Et cetera. Discussion regarding traffic on Bruce Lane, we have some great correspondence from, um. Michael McDonald over many years, did, I'm sure you guys all saw it, but I thought it was.
Told him that I would try and fix this for him.
Okay, so you're on, you're on the line.
I'm on the hook.
I, I understand his concerns, so I think now, um, our newest public safety, do we have them on to speak?
Um, I believe they are on, I don't know if they wanna add anything, I can, I can go over real brief and then, uh.
You go, you go first, and if, if you're missing anything, they'll let you know.
Or, uh, Deputy Chief can jump in, so, I mean, basically, you know, it all, like you said, it all started with, with, with the correspondence many years ago. Uh, we've since, um, contacted and, uh, are working with. Uh, Beta Engineering Group, which is, uh, does a lot of traffic coordination and speed issues. Uh, they've, they've looked at it and kinda looked at what our options are available to us. Uh, you know, essentially through state law and what our local options are to, to govern traffic within our municipality. His suggestion was to go with either a twenty-five or a thirty, um, sign that's yellow. Uh, you know, and brightly colored.
Speed limit sign.
Yeah, speed limit sign, they, they typically get, uh, you know, it's, it's, doesn't kinda blend into the background, you obviously see the black and white signs and. You know, this one jumps out at you, and so the, uh, Police Chief and the DPW. Uh, and the Fire Chief all determined that, that the, um, twenty-five would probably be more appropriate in this case, so that's. What we went, had and had put up, uh, and the locations identified in, in your packet.
I couldn't quite, I, I knew one was Bruce, but the other one I couldn't figure out.
They're both Bruce, one at each end.
One at each end.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, one at each end, and then additionally.
That's great.
Yeah, additionally, uh, Rich Souza coordinated with the principal at Bukeur School. So in, you know, in correspondence and communication to the parents over there with. Uh, the new ADA ramps and the suggested, uh, pedestrian paths to utilize the ADA ramps. Uh, going to the school, they, you know, they highlighted the, you know, the reduced speed on Bruce Lane and that parents should be utilizing. You know, the, the alternative, um, pathways to drop their kids off at school. So this is, you know, the first step, hopefully this, this fixes but the situation, but we'll be monitoring it, cause, uh, you know, this time goes by.
So, one of the issues I think we ran into is as Bruce Lane does not actually abut. The school property, it cannot be a school zone sign.
That's right, yep, so it's, I have it here, it says, uh. Yeah, it's, uh, you know, although, right, it's, it's adjacent to a school zone, it does not, uh, qualify as a school zone. So that's the twenty miles per hour is reserved for that.
So how much closer would a street have to be to the school zone, I mean?
It has to touch the property.
The street has to touch the property, not the backyards.
So, and we ran into that here on Arbor Street with a light on Edel Avenue. So, again, Arbor doesn't physically tou- touch the school property, therefore, it's not in the school zone either.
Wow. So this is, this is, hopefully will work and help the situation on Bruce Lane.
Is that, we're all, you know, I believe the Chief, if you wanna say a few words, Chief?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a real good first step, I think it's gonna, uh, hopefully, uh, slow people down, I think it's, it's real solid visibility. I can't think of much more visibility we could have done, myself and, uh, Director Souza also, uh, spoke with the principal. Over at the Bukeur, uh, and did a, you know, a, a site visit, if you will, and a walk around, and, and I, I, I just think it's. Well, what we're trying to accomplish at this time with this, with this speed, I, I think it's a smart first step and hopefully knock on wood. Uh, it'll address a lot of the issues and concerns.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Just to follow up, Chief, um, remember, uh, what was the last meeting, not the three-minute meeting, but the previous meeting? Um, the issue with the kids hitting the button on the Arbor Street, Edel Ave? And then once it, once it, uh, went on, they just jumped out in the road, and they didn't actually look to see if people were stopping? Do you remember that conversation we had?
Um, I, I don't, but that's alright, um, that's certainly something we can, we can take a peek at as well. With, without a doubt, if, if that's still an issue that's occurring, is that a one-time issue, or is that something that's been occurring more, more often?
It her, it happens in the morning and afternoon, whenever they're coming and going, I can talk to you later about it.
Okay.
Did, is that the conversation we asked, maybe the SRO would go over and talk to the kids about proper use of that button and how the, how the. You know, we never had one like that before, we have the light up here on Main Street, but they don't, maybe don't understand the use of the. The importance of waiting and still looking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can have, Sergeant Marsh is our safety officer, we don't have a designated SRO specific to Wenham. Uh, but Gina over in Hamilton PD, uh, works as kind of, uh, over at the high school and then back and forth a little bit. But I think Sergeant Marsh, that would be good, ha- if it's happening in our municipality, that, to maybe, uh, go down there, he's on day shift as well, so it, he can certainly hop on that.
Great, thank you.
You got it.
Great, any more discussion on Bruce? Feel alright to move on?
So do we need a motion to, um, install a twenty-five mile per hour sign?
I think it's already there, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe you, I, you, I think public safety can act.
Um, so let's move to J, a discussion and a potential vote to accept the scope of work on the Iron Rail Best Use Study. As presented by the Iron Rail Commission, we have the Iron Rail Commission, oh. Special guest tonight.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair, so, yep, uh, just by way of background, the residents had put, um. A feasibility study on the ARPA list, it was, it landed around the top ten, so this. Has been, um, an ongoing project the last couple months, um, Margaret Hoffman and I, um, had drafted this. Scope of Service, um, for a potential best use study. And we had gotten feedback from the Iron Rail Commission a couple of different times, had a couple meetings with them. And we also got feedback from the Planning Board, and this has been an ongoing project, and I'm just happy to announce tonight, I think. This is ripe for the Select Board's review, to hopefully approve this, and I can continue with the procurement process. Um, I did wanna, uh, again, acknowledge Margaret Hoffman, who did a great job, um, drafting a large amount of this, um, so thank you, Margaret. And hopefully we can get this going, and from what I understand, this project, the study, best use study would take about two to three months. So ideally, maybe we can get this done late summer, early, by late summer or early fall. So, I think this has been kinda in the making for several years at least, so.
It's a good one.
Yeah, I'm happy to move forward with this, um, but yeah, if the Board has any questions, other, other than I, you're happy to deliberate.
So I thought it was pretty well, um, well-rounded, took into a lot of, um. Took into a lot of different pieces of it, the zoning, transportation, the topology, topography, stuff like that. But then it's also looking for use, uses of the whole property.
Yes, we're definitely coming from a neutral approach, we just wanna include as much detail as we can for the potential vendors. Um, but yes, we included wetland, zoning, you name it, so we're really confident with this, with this draft. So we're really confident with this, with this draft, again, with the, uh, planning board and especially the iron rail commission's feedback.
And they were all, they all went with this one, they liked.
This is the most current, yes, with their suggestions included, correct.
Any other questions, you guys?
I'd just say that, uh, actually the three of us, what was it, last year? Did the site visit out to iron rail, so we're all familiar with the conditions and, uh, look forward to.
Seeing what they say.
Seeing what they say.
Yeah. Pete, we can take a motion?
Yep, uh, I move that the Wenham Select Board vote to accept scope of work on the iron rail best use study as presented by the iron rail commission and authorize staff to move forward on the procurement process.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? No, perfect.
Thanks, Joe, for putting this together, no, just thank you.
Oh, okay. Roll call vote, Pete?
Yep, yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Diane votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Joe and the whole team there for that. So procurement, how long will that, the procurement process will take? How long you think to get somebody to come in?
So actually, not that long, because from what I understand, this is, uh, we don't have to go through an RFP process. We do want to mimic the thirty B process by obtaining several quotes, but this shouldn't take long at all. Uh, the longer part will obviously be the study, but, um, I anticipate that being about two to three months.
And how come we don't need to do an RFP because of the cost?
So I think Steve had looked into this as.
Services, such as like engineering, legal.
Oh, okay.
This falls under that umbrella.
And I did confirm this with the inspector general's office, that RFP is not needed for this.
That's great. That makes it goes faster. Great, thank you. And next page. Pingree Park presentation, or Pingree Park Skate Park presentation.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, Chris.
I am Chris. Uh, thanks so much for taking the time, um, oh, and putting up the slideshow. Um, yeah, so, uh, my name's Chris Bevelacqua, resident, um, in Hamilton. Um, and myself and a group of other folks, um, have been talking for a number of years now about, um, the possibility of a skateboard park in town, uh, cement park, um, and trying to pick the right location for it. We have engaged with Sean over at Park and Rec and the Park and Rec Committee as well. Um, when we first started thinking about this idea, to kind of bring them on board and, and they seemed to like the idea. Um, so we have been for a couple of years now, really kind of trying to prepare for, um, kind of what would be the best location. Um, and based on conversation with Sean, the Park and Rec Committee, um, we kind of identified a few different spots, but Pingree Park would be the ideal location. Um, a lot of, in, it would be the location where the, the, all the tennis courts are currently, the ones that are kind of in disrepair. Um, we'd been waiting to see what the vote on the fields would be, um, because we knew that new tennis courts were part of that project over at the high school. Um, and now that that's gone through and been approved, um, we wanted to touch base with the select committee, kind of share our thoughts for, for why we'd want to park, um, where, you know, kind of, again, where we, we propose to put it. Um, kind of share what steps we've taken so far as far as, um, background and research. And then kind of get your, um, get your opinions on it and your feedback, um, and see if it's something that you think would benefit the community. Um, Sean, anything I'm missing from that, does that sound about accurate for right now?
Yeah, I think for, for the start, yeah, I think you, you hit on everything, Chris.
Okay. Um, so the way this all kind of got started, and we've got folks on the call from our, uh, committee, so BJ Brown and Josh Sostek, uh, who are part of this group are here, so they can jump in and, and speak to some of this as well. So, um, the name Patrick Boynton comes from a friend of BJ's, he and Patrick grew up, um, skateboarding in what was the old skateboard park over at Patton Park years and years and years ago. Um, uh, Patrick unfortunately passed away, uh, this is kind of a passion project of BJ's and it just kind of fell in line with, with what some of the rest of us are trying to do. So the idea of building this park in, in memory of, um, Patrick and then giving a place for, for kids in town to skateboard, scooter, uh, ride bikes, whatever it is. So again, the goal is to create a safe space, um, for kids to skateboard, bike, scooter, um, and a recreation space for youth families and adults in Hamilton Wenham. So, um, with a lot of traditions and opportunities for traditional sports, quote unquote, traditional sports, there doesn't seem to be, um, many opportunities for an alternative sport like this, maybe for kids that, you know, are not going to participate in quote unquote additional sports or traditional sports. So, um, to have this resource, especially in Pingree, where it's already got so many great resources, it would kind of make it a really comprehensive park. Um, you know, with the, with the softball, um, the soccer fields, um, baseball fields. Um, just really kind of give something for everybody. Um, talked to some of the heads of some of the, um, sports programs in town, so whether it be little league, um, softball, they, they seem to like the idea, especially when it comes to game time. If parents have kids looking for something to do, they would have that great playground area, but then they would also have this as a resource, kids go, go over and use this space while maybe their parents are there watching, um, their other kids play ball, um, or compete in other sporting events. So that is that, I don't know if you want to go to the next slide real quick. Um, so benefits, again, um, just looking at providing space and opportunity for youth who are not engaged in traditional sports like I talked about. Um, space for youth and adults to build healthy communities. Um, one of the things that we're, you know, that we see a lot, and I think we hear a lot about in the news is coming out of COVID. Um, folks looking for those social opportunities, places to engage, skate parks are a great, um, space for that. If you've ever been to one, there's a great one in Ipswich. Um, you know, if you go by on any weekend, afternoon, evening, um, or even during the week, you'll see adults, little kids, middle-aged kids, all the, everyone there, um, riding together and it's, it creates a great social space. Um, great place for youth and adults to build healthy communities. So again, uh, so that's what we just talked about, but then to provide a safe space for youth to be recognized and appreciated. So again, um, I think, you know, you've got a lot of kids in traditional sports, they get that recognition, um, in those, on those teams. They get that, that supportive, um, they get that support from the community. Um, skate parks are just another place for, uh, youth to find that. And then creating a space that has activity increases physical and emotional health. Again, um, looking for opportunities for kids to get out and connect, again, after COVID and, and really kind of, um, you know, find a place to build their, their emotional health as well as their physical health. Um, next slide, so like you talked about the proposed location, um, talked to a couple of different, um, skate park designers already um, about this location, uh, proposing two of the old courts, we don't necessarily need all four. Um, they would just, they're ideal, um, we talked about, when Sean, when we first came to Sean, they were also looking at feasibility for the West Wenham Park. Um, but even with, with that location, this one seems to be, um, more centrally located, right? Easier access from neighborhoods, from kids downtown to get there, kids, um, after school, being able to get here. Um, across the street from the library, it just seems more central, um, and more accessible. Um, and again, it's, it's a location that's in need of repair, uh, talking with Sean and, and the Park and Rec Committee. Um, it sounds like, you know, those courts don't get as much use as they could and, and with them being in disrepair, this would be an opportunity to create a new clean space, um, in at least a portion of that area, um, that would appeal to the community as a recreation destination, so. Um, next slide. So again, I apologize, the comparisons, we did have the West Wenham Park, but now that that is kind of in motion and, and not an option, just kind of some of the pros and cons about that space that we talked about as a group. Um, so again, easy and safe access to the community, there's parking available there, which is nice. Um, minimal site prep would be required, um, talking to some of the builders, they could pour, uh, a concrete park right over the existing slabs if they needed to. Um, and it's visible, right? You can, you can see it from the, from the park, um, when you're driving by on the street. Um, you can see it, uh, across the street from the library, so, um, there's some visibility to that if, um, so that, again, for safety in those things. Uh, the cons, just competing interests could slow progress of it. So again, that was prior to the, um, Fields vote, um, which now that it's gone through, there doesn't seem to be too much that could, um, that could come up against it. Again, there might be other things in town, we haven't really launched the community outreach phase of this yet, so, um, but that's just one possibility. And then, um, just this potential resistance from neighbors, um, but that's one of the things that we would have to do, again, some education around and talking to neighbors and, and really kind of seeing, uh, helping them understand what it could be and, and, and the impact it would really have. Um, next slide. Um, so a design, looking at a kind of a design build model for this. So, you know, bidding out the project according to town policies to builders who have successful track records, um, municipalities, so there's lots, you know, these skate parks are nothing new, there's new ones going, new one just went in Dairy, New Hampshire, there's one in Process in Salisbury, Massachusetts. The Ipswich one just went in, um, there's one going in Dover, currently in New Hampshire. So there's a lot happening with these in the area, um, right now. So, uh, lots of companies are involved and they've been involved for ten to twenty years. So, um, lots of folks with good reputations. And then kind of design the project in phases, so it could be done over time if necessary, um, you know, depending on funding. And then working with contractors to identify, uh, materials needed, um, hoping to secure some in-kind donations, um, to start the project if we have to. Um, the cost, again, estimated, if we did two full courts, it would probably be a three hundred thousand dollar project. Um, again, you could break that into phases, um, and, you know, so that we could get a portion done, um, and then kind of fundraise again if we needed to or go back to CPC or wherever we're going to get the funding from, so. Um, next slide. So again, funding sources that we talked about, um, we've already talked to Hamilton Wenham CPCs to see if these would qualify, um, for funding and both said they would, um, they both said they seemed to like the projects. Um, so, you know, encouraged us to, once we're ready to go, apply for CPC funding. Um, there are, you know, talking to local banks, uh, like Institution for Savings, um, you know, just preliminary discussions. It sounds like something that, you know, they said they would fund, they fund in other communities. Um, family foundations in the area, um, you know, obviously private donations, crowdsourcing, if we had to go that route. Um, lots of options to do that and then in-kind donations like I just spoke about. Um, so again, just as far as the CPC funds, you know, Park and Rec was a part of that. Um, the, the committees did say that, um, Park and Rec would be the ones to apply for the funds, so we've talked with Sean and the committee about that. So when we get to that point, um, we would go through them. Um, next slide. Um, so what we've done so far, so completed, like I said, we've talked to the CPC folks, um, we've talked to the Park and Rec Committee. So now for next steps, so just looking, this is why we're in front of you, kind of looking for, um, an approval to kind of move forward with using that space and, and, um, starting to kind of talk about this project a little more broadly. Um, engage with community groups and understanding for the appetite of the projects, um, again, show additions, uh, or as well as, um, how additions to the project could meet needs, um, for other constituents. So we've had initial talks with the council on aging, they kind of expressed interest around, well, if you're going to be, you know, i- if you're going to do a project there, one of the things that seniors would love was a walking track around the outside of Pingree Park. So if you've got a company there pouring a cement park, can they also, as part of this project, pour, pour a partial walking track? If that's something that, you know, the Park and Rec Committee and, and folks decide would, would benefit. Um, and then engage in the community in design and funding for the projects as well as, um, presenting to Hamilton CPCs and Wenham CPCs and then beginning work, um, on project in the spring of twenty twenty-four, so. Um, that is kind of where we're at, um, it's what we've talked about. I don't know if BJ and Josh, if you guys have any more that you want to jump in on and add, um, anything I missed? Otherwise, um, I guess we're happy to kind of take some questions and talk to some folks.
Think you nailed it, Chris, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
I know when we were looking at West Wenham Park, uh, whether there should be a skateboard park in there. Um, and we were kind of worried that the biggest users would be people from Danvers. So we're right smack in the middle of town. So I like, I like the location.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, and I can, um, if you don't mind if I just jump, so it's, uh, Sean Timmons, Hamilton Wenham Recreation Director. So I think, you know, one of the things that Chris kind of hit on, but, um, you know, we really want to stress as part of this, uh, process was that, um, you know, this committee did come before the rec, the rec committee, um, you know, probably, I mean, two years ago at this point. Um, and, you know, we talked about a number of different locations that something like this could potentially go. Um, and really, you know, it kept on coming, coming back to Pingree Park because of the location, because of it being a, a kind of a distressed, uh, distressed asset that the town already has. Um, but really, we kind of told this group or the committee, the rec committee told this group to kind of, you know, hang on, wait back, see what happens with the high school project, um, because obviously the Pingree tennis courts were where the high school team used to play. Um, so we didn't want to do anything, talk about anything, um, until, or the rec committee, you know, said, hey, you know, let's not, you know, really do anything until that process bears itself out. Um, certainly that process has bared itself out. So now, you know, I think the question becomes, you know, we have this asset in Pingree Park that's not being used, that is distressed, that really can't be used, you know, what can we do with it? Um, that maybe it's a little bit different as a skate park, like it's just looking at that asset at Pingree Park and saying, what can we do with it? Um, and, you know, we think, you know, these guys obviously, um, you know, have their ducks in a row, they know what they're talking about. Um, they've come before the, the rec committee, so we thought, um, you know, that this potential avenue, uh, you know, might be something of interest. And also I'll mention that, you know, we've done, um, we've done, but folks have done, you know, obviously the West Wenham, um, master plan. Um, the town of Hamilton just did a Patton Park master plan, you know, part of that process was, you know, survey results, asking the community, you know, what would they like to see? Uh, and in both instances, um, you know, skateboard, some, sometimes even unprovoked, um, you know, skateboard parks or skate parks, um, or something for, you know, the underserved kind of youth population was something that came up in, in both instances. So I know the rec committee, you know, has been supportive of this sort of idea, um, but really wanted to wait to see kind of the, you know, have it, have the high school, uh, project shake out, uh, before really, you know, kind of moving to the next step, which I guess this would be the next step.
Thank you. Pete, anything else to say?
I have three questions for you. So one, no lights, right?
Uh, no, we, currently we didn't have any lights in the plan, but if, because, yeah, we prefer not to be going at night.
Okay, and, um, are these things hard to maintain?
Uh, no, so cement parks, which are what we're looking at, um, there's not a lot of maintenance to them. So town of Newburyport has had theirs for about, oof, I want to say, they're coming up on fifteen years now. Um, the most maintenance they have to do is there's, sometimes there are some cracks in the concrete that form and there's some ceiling, but like the companies will come back and they'll do the crack ceiling to take care of it. Um, that's really the majority of it. In some instances, um, you'll see graffiti sometimes come up, but that is power, that's kind of sandblasted off pretty easily. Um, what I will say is, again, I'll use the example of the Ipswich Park, um, it's over at Bielak Park, which is off of Line Brook, um, which is a main road, kind of close to town, it's got other ball fields on it, gets a lot of traffic. Uh, it's been there for about a year and a half, um, no graffiti, um, has shown up on it. But again, part of that is, it's a result of, um, the group that, that had it built, um, you know, kind of engendering this ownership among the community of the, of the place. So being down there, you know, doing trash cleanups, you know, really kind of like, having people create ownership and make it their own place, which is something that, you know, we'd want to do, uh, with this spot as well.
So my third question, and I don't want to sound like, uh, I'm, I'm not behind this, because I really am, but.
Yep.
For, for example, in Ipswich, did the town have to like, uh, pay any extra premiums for liability?
Uh, that I don't know, I, I, I can't speak to that, I could look into it. Um, but typically, so I'm trying to think, the, there was a skate park, uh, built in the town of North Andover and the one in, and there was one in Andover, uh, years ago. And those ones I don't, they went through the town, I don't believe they had to secure any additional liability for those, again, I can get confirmation. Um, most times in municipalities when parks are built, um, you know, they're built in open spaces, uh, as long as there's no fence put up around it, it's a, generally a use at your own risk, um, and that helps keep liability down. It's typically when, when folks enclose the parks, um, you know, now you're incurring liability because you're essentially taking ownership, you're, you're putting up a barrier and, and kind of implying ownership. So, um, that becomes more of a lot, there, there becomes more liability associated with that or can be.
Right, so it's early days, but you might want to just find out what Ipswich had.
Yep, absolutely.
I can, I can also just ask our agent.
Yeah.
If anything be required.
Great.
Gary?
Okay.
Well, I had a couple of the same questions about the insurance liability on the town and also the, um, long-term maintenance. And also, uh, I would take that, uh, this would have to be under the management of the, uh, joint rec committee.
Yes, that's what we talked about.
Some management, uh, setup, and I think we need to, uh, you know, consider Pingree Park as a whole too, because essentially, you know. And I think we need to, you know, consider Pingree Park as a whole too, because essentially, you know, we're out of acreage there and we ought to look and see what particular sports or activities we want to dedicate, you know. Essentially, we're taking tennis courts away or pickleball courts, you know, for a skate park. So I think perhaps either through the master plan process or through a select board here, that we ought to take a look at the park, Pingree Park as a whole, as to what we're going to do with it. And then certainly we need to, I think, hear from the butters, because this is a major change of, of use at the park. And although Pingree Park was deeded as a playground, so this would seem to, you know, fall under that auspice. But we ought to make sure that everything is checked off here.
Yeah, and can I just add Gary, because that's a good point. I, I think really, you know, what this conversation is about is, you know, because we're certainly, you know, and I know, Chris, we're not, you know, looking for approval to go ahead and build this. I think we're looking for, you know, kind of, and support's probably not even the right word either, but just the ability to kind of vet this process out, you know, without kind of stepping on anyone's toes. So like that, like I agree, like I think that's kind of, you know, where we're trying to head in this direction is to make sure that we're kind of, you know, doing that kind of due diligence to see, because it is a change. But you know, with everything that's been going on, you know, if West Wenham goes forward, you know, they're, they're, they have four pickleball courts over there. The high school is just building four tennis courts at the high school. That's going to have public access with pickleball courts there. So I just, when, you know, when the rec committee or the rec department looks at, you know, recreation, we, it's hard for us to differentiate Hamilton and Wenham. And I know, you know, certainly you guys are, are certainly, you know, they have to watch out for Wenham, but we're trying to see kind of big picture, you know, how things work at, at all the parks in town.
Thanks Sean. Yeah, we are Wenham, very special, so we don't want to be forgotten. And there can never be too many pickleball courts, just so you know. But a couple of things I had in my head, I think it would have to go through the HDC as well, because all of Pingree Park is in the HDC zone. That, that's one other thing that would need to be looked at. And I think that we definitely need to take into consideration, as you said, a lot of the residents and specifically the neighbors, although it's on the side, that there's really no butters.
The one sitting right on Porter.
Except for the ones that, never mind, yes, I was thinking it was, the other side of Pingree Park has more of the houses right behind them. And it's right behind the Boulders. Okay, so I just think that a lot of that needs to be looked at because you want a lot of support, I think, for something like this. My, so then I had two other things. I do appreciate that you checked with other departments like the council on aging and whatnot. I thought that was a really nice, nice touch to try to bring people together. So if you're only going to use two courts, what would that leave the other two courts availability? I don't know, maybe this is for Sean, is there a plan to use the other two courts for something else?
No, I mean, I think that's part of, and I guess that's kind of part of the process, right? Like the courts are, I mean, honestly, sitting there, collecting dust. Unusable, distressed. And you know, what, what is the best way to kind of move forward with, you know, taking that distressed asset and turning it into something that's, you know, that is usable? For me, you know, I think something like this, like a skate park, is something that's been identified in the master plans at both Patton and West Wenham. I think it fits and sort of like Chris says, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities for kids to play baseball, soccer, softball, basketball in town. There's really not a lot of opportunity for sort of like quote unquote alternative sports. So I think, you know, maybe it's, maybe something like this is coupled with another court sport or, or something else. So you know, what I, you know, it doesn't seem like the high school tennis team is going to need those four courts to have their matches there. So what is the best way to move forward to develop that or turn that asset into something that's going to be usable? You know, from, you know, and basically, you know, the busiest park in, in the town of Wenham. So I think, you know, trying to find that balance, you know, is something that we're looking at. But certainly I know the rec committee, you know, had, had, you know, you know, initial support for a project like this.
Yeah, so I guess I, I would like to see support for, or something, a project that would include that whole area and not just take up two of the courts and then we still have two decrepit areas. So maybe a wider look at that. And then my, my other concern is there's, you just mentioned there are lots of other skateboard parks around. There's, you just mentioned Amesbury, not, did you mean Amesbury, I meant Ipswich, North Andover, et cetera, et cetera. But so there are other places around, it would nice, be nice to be able to have that in one of two, I'm just throwing different things out. But there was one in Manchester and it's not there anymore. It did happen to become pickleball courts, but just curious as to why you think that it didn't last in Manchester. Chris?
Oh, so that one, so it was a prefab park, so prefabricated, right? So the, the ramps were, they were all kind of built out of, out of wood and fiberglass. The layout was not fantastic. I think these cement parks and these concrete parks that are being built these days, they're just more dynamic. They, they offer more for a variety of age groups and a variety of age ranges. So when you build those prefab parks, you know, you're kind of, you're stuck to a height and a dimension that they kind of use across the whole, the whole space. And it just becomes limiting, there's not a lot you can do with it. When you look at some of these cement parks that people are creating and building today, it's, like I said, it's more of a dynamic. It's the landscape of the park is, you know, goes from low and small and to higher and it's just, they're more accommodating. I, I think a lot of it with skate parks is just when you're building, you have to, you kind of have to think about the fact that, you know, everyone from a two-year-old all the way up to, you know, and a grown adult will use this. So how, how are you really best creating that space? And for us, I think a lot of it is, I, I don't know what kind of feasibility, feasibility studies they did before building that park. But again, I think for us, it's, the next step is really about kind of engaging the community and the, the other agencies and really understanding, you know, what are the age groups that are looking to use this? And, and you know, where's the, where's the need? And then really kind of crafting something that meets that need.
Well, that's interesting, thank you. Can we invite a resident who came up? Mr. Lucy, would you chat?
Good evening, I'm Michael Lucy. I live at 10 Wallace Drive, which is part of the Boulders and I'm on the Boulders Board. We're very interested in what this is all about, it's news to us. But I was impressed with the openness of Sean and Chris, that this is the beginning of a process, that they want to engage with the, the community in general, but also with the butters. And we look forward to doing that. I haven't done any detailed review of any of this because it's very, very new. But the bottom line is safety and noise. Safety in particular, if the rendering, if I read the rendering correctly, it looks like you get the flat edge and then a subterranean scoop down. And that's where you picture the two-year-old not knowing what they're doing and falling four or five feet. So, so I'm sure there are protocols, procedures, the things that prevent that, but safety, safety, safety and noise. The courts are 100 feet from several of the residences and full disclosure, including mine. And noise is not something we want to see changed. And we will be happy to engage with the process that the town runs and with Sean and Chris and the committee. Okay?
Thank you, thank you very much. So this is just a presentation tonight, just so that we have some ideas. Well, Chris, Sean's going to say something.
So I guess I just, for this, we, we, you know, the skateboard park committee didn't really want to get into that next kind of outreach phase. You know, whatever that next step is without actually, you know, kind of having the select boards, I don't want to say blessing, but you know, the go-ahead that says, yes, you know, let's explore what we can do with this site. And you know, this is a, you know, and again, like I said, you know, the skateboard park, the skate committee was, you know, one of the, we've been going through, you know, kind of talking about this for a couple of years. So you know, we just, I guess the, when I say we, the rec committee didn't want to say, hey, go ahead, you know, go, go, go for it without actually saying, all right, like it's, this is on the town, this is, you know, part of the property of the town of Wenham. It is a change, you know, would potentially be a change in use, you know. Can we, can the skate park committee kind of get to those next steps? And we wanted to make sure that, you know, we got in front of the, the select board before, you know, we did any of that, any of that process.
Thoughts?
I would just build on your point about, hey, you've only fixed half. I mean, how expensive would it be just to throw a basketball court onto the side?
So perhaps the solution then is the select board, go back and ask the joint rec committee for a more comprehensive recommendation on that whole area there. So that, you know, as we talked about, perhaps doing it funding in stages, we ought to prioritize, you know, rehabilitation of that whole area there. Because obviously did the onsite view and the four courts right now are totally unusable. I mean, you got three or four inch gaps in there. So and I think we need to look at, you know, going forward, how will the courts be maintained? Because we've, you know, in the old West Wenham, we made the mistake once, so if, you know, putting stuff in place and then thinking it's done. So I would like to see a, a full management plan as to who's going to take responsibility for this as far as maintenance going forward, managing it and so forth. So I think.
So I, I do, I sense that we're pretty positive with the idea. I think the presentation was great, I liked the outreach to the departments, awareness of the residents, taking into consideration the rest of that, that area that's been neglected. Without a vote, I think it's a pretty positive, let's, let's start looking at that and see what comes up. I'd like to see that maybe we get updates on what you find out. And I'd like to ask residents such as the Boulders and, and the neighbors in that area to make sure that they're aware and to reach out either to the rec committee directly or to the select board on, on any concerns that they might have, so that we can all work together as a group.
Great, that sounds fantastic, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much for your time and thanks to everybody for, for the consideration and hearing us out and the support on this. Yeah, I'll work with Sean and we'll, we'll let, keep you posted on, on where we're going and next steps.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, everybody. Oh, here we go, L. Discussion to establish action items to assist with the transition from a three to five member select board. Again, let's just remind everybody they need to take out nomination papers, so we actually can get two new members to the select board. But we do need to think about how we are going to transition and I think we need to make some plans before the transition. Such as some policies, how, how do we think, as silly as deciding how we're going to sit and how we're going to present, how we're going to choose chairs and how we're going to rotate the board? And what were my other comments that I had? Do you remember what I wrote down? Action items, action items. I look so unprepared.
Well, do we only have three positions, like named positions?
Yes.
So why wouldn't it always the, the most senior is always the chair, next vice chair?
Because sometimes it'll be two, two people elected at the same time, so their third year would be the same year. I don't think there's any, when I've spoken to other communities, there's really no way to rotate that way. It would have to be an election every, every year when you reorganize. Just things to think about. So we have a policy in place right now for the three on, on how we're going to reorganize and how we're going to prepare meetings, et cetera, et cetera. I think we just need to sit down and talk about the difference of when you have five.
Other towns with five have it, how do they do it?
Most of them, they, they do a vote, but there's different criteria and stuff from what I heard. I didn't take notes, I just started asking around to get them. Every year after the election, you reorganize.
And then it gets down to.
I'm running for chair.
Well, not at the election, but once you were together.
Once you have the five established, then amongst the five, you're going to have a internal vote.
Oh, got it.
To decide.
Right.
Who gets which position.
And are we going to have criteria on that? Do you have to be on the board for a year before you can become chair or things of that nature? So I think TA Steve had Bernie, is it Bernie?
Yes.
Who is, who is Bernie?
Bernie, well Bernie Lynch, Community Paradigm. He, former city manager and well does workshops. I did reach out to him about two weeks ago and have not heard back yet, so I'm not sure if he's interested. But he does do workshops with select boards about, you know, best practices, communication practices, you know, through town manager, TA, the board, the chair. You know, just things that typically work well in other communities, you know, when you have a group of new, new members. I thought, you know, it might be, might be worthwhile to explore, but he hasn't gotten back to me yet. But I have some other ideas of names, if it was something that the board thought.
So I think it would be good to bring someone in, because I think moving from a three to a five is not just adding two people to the board and continue as, as is. So, and I think we need to have policies and procedures in place before the change happens, which would be in June, so we don't have a lot of time. Not saying that those policies wouldn't change, but at least we would start out with processes and procedures. And then as time goes on, if a group of five people decide they want to make a change, then we can alter those policies. Rather than just saying, okay, here we are, we're five, what are we going to do now?
Well, I'm just trying to think. I mean, I work on a five-person board, the planning board. And I don't remember that we had to have an internal vote.
Of course you do, every year, the first meeting after every election, you reorganize.
It's just the planning has been pretty much the same personalities and the same positions for a long time. But I'm thinking on the select board, you're going to have, you know, it might be competition.
It might be competition. Ideally, the board moves around a lot and it's not the same all the time.
I think the other big thing you can kind of look at too is whereas now with a chair and two others, we can deal effectively with a town administrator. With five, if you look at all the towns that have transitioned to five, typically the next thing that follows is a shift, perhaps not absolutely to a town management style. But there's certainly going to change the dynamics with a town administrator having to work with five different people versus three. And that we need to decide how individual select board members, are they going to work through the chairman to the town administrator? Or are we going to shift responsibilities for certain things to the town administrator?
Yep.
Automatically as far as, you know, contracting, scheduling, hiring and so forth down the line.
So that's, that will be a change, yep, yep. So I just wanted to bring it to your, to your attention that we need to think about these things. So we came up with two, just the rotation and the reorganization, the communication modes through the town administrator. And I know that there are more that we need to think about, that we should probably just make a list of all the things that we need to, to work on before we transition, so that we know where we're going once that happens.
Right.
In June. So if you guys want to think about that and we could just follow this up next week. Next meeting? Next week, that would be great, thank you very much.
I have something that's fairly trite, but as the newbie on the board, a year ago, I came in and we were, Tom was still town administrator.
Interim Tom?
And so I had to make up my own orientation. Like I didn't know I had a mailbox, didn't know I could have a key. And so I'd be more than happy to work with, because I actually wrote out a pretty good list.
You mean things, things to know as a select board?
Things to, people to meet.
People to meet.
Right?
Right.
Trudy, Trudy was really good in saying, hey, you got to take the oath and then you got to do this online open meeting course and get a certificate.
Yeah, it's all great stuff, yeah, I know we should have.
Yeah, so I, I have some of those ideas. Yeah. So I, I have some of those ideas as well. So
And also do the Steve Kavanaugh tour of the town.
Three to five and so you just select
And as we've, uh, talked
Select board.
You know, the, uh...
What do you want to call that? Select board? Wait, I just said, I need a word. Select board orientation.
Orientation.
Thank you. Okay.
And I said, go ahead.
And I think too that, uh, with five members, that, uh, the information flow that we need to establish, and I know Michelle's working on this, a, uh, a reference library for, uh, select board members so that, you know, some come with a particular background from other committees. But there's certainly, uh, a lot of items that would be handy for the select board members, especially new ones to have, like the full list of, uh, committee members, the list of committee charges, and the list of, you know, job descriptions for all the employees in town so that they get an idea right from the start of who's doing what and who's responsible for what and how it's all done.
So a, a town of Wenham reference library.
So who wants to do it? I, I mean, I can, I did a pretty comprehensive list.
So
Who to start with?
Yeah. So, and I also have a, a document started as like best practices for select board for three people, for five people. So maybe, um, the best way to do this is to electronically?
Yeah.
Maybe if you could send it all to Steve, you could send some ideas to Steve.
And we're talking the ninth?
And then, yeah, let's, let's bring them back by the ninth.
And here's a really great novel idea, is that the new people can actually meet with us as long as it's no more than two at a time.
So that's, so open meeting law, there are still challenges.
Yeah.
You know, so you can have one person, but you can't
Have three.
Right. So, um, we do have, so we'll have a open meeting law review because it's, it's just a little bit different. We want to make sure we don't cause those problems. So, um, anything else we want to add on that little sidebar?
Nope.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So
So each of us have a task to do that.
To, to share any ideas that you have, that you've been working on. Um, great for new select board members, but also for old select board members. Old, not old, um, seasoned, talented people that have been here before.
Veteran.
Veteran. There we go. So our last order of business is, is all me. And I just have to find my draft. We had, um, a great policy or procedure, I guess it's a policy, for scheduled, scheduled meetings, the scheduled meeting cycle that was in the packet. I think it's online as well, um, that I made a bunch of changes on. And I made a bunch of changes on them, um, to, to bring more collaboration amongst the boards into making the agenda. And I moved it around a little bit. So, um, what I wanted to do was read it out loud.
I read it.
I know you read it, but I made a lot of changes and, and I have a couple of extra changes. And I want to make sure if we just try to read it all out loud, um, that it might make more sense or you might find something that doesn't make sense. So it won't take too long. It's still probably maybe just the second quarter. So. The Wenham Select Board shall hold regularly scheduled public meetings each month to conduct town business. To accomplish this, there is an extensive preparation and follow-up afterwards, all of which necessitates an efficient and effective plan. The objective of this policy is to conduct town business in a timely manner while allowing the public time for input, establishing an efficient use of administrative support resources and allowing the select board ample time to consider items individually prior to the meeting deliberations. The Wenham Select Board adopts the following event sequence for meeting preparation and conduct. The select board will normally meet on the first and third Tuesday each month. The select board will rely on the current edition of Robert Rules of Order for conduct of the meeting. The format of the meeting agenda shall follow the following outline. The chair calls the meeting to order and may take the opportunity to recognize any significant town occurrence, citizens' significant life event, or extraordinary information needed by the public. A public comment period of 10 minutes during which time, if recognized by the chair, a member of the public may speak for up to a two-minute time limit on any topic. So we should discuss that. The select board response dependent on the chair and there will not be any back and forth deliberation. That's all in B. Announcements of town and local events and items. I took it away from just the town administrator. We could share that duty if we choose. Approval of past minutes are normally accomplished through a consent agenda. We don't need to then say that it's consisting of previous meeting minutes. Reports from other, from the town administrator, the chairman and other select board members and other, and/or from other town officials or employees as designated by the select board. Review any correspondence sent or received, not important, just any. New business to consist of those items included in that week's information packet. Old business to consider those items included in a previous week's packets that have not yet been concluded. Review of the upcoming schedule, select board schedule, chairman's closing remarks, motion and vote to adjourn. Preparation for the meeting will begin at the day after the meeting, when the TA and chair will review the meeting and prepare the draft agenda. This is the change. The TA sends the draft agenda to the other select board members for their comments, additions and/or questions. The select board members are to return their comments, ideas and/or suggestions on the draft agenda to the TA by Monday.
You know, when I was reading this?
Mm-hmm.
I thought this was like our policy and I was like, we're not doing this.
We're not doing this because we weren't doing that. We were doing it differently. Yes. Um, so then I have another meeting here between the TA and the chair, but I have a question mark there because, um, I've been monopolizing the time of the, of the TA. So I'm not sure how that will go past. So I got a question mark on number eight. Items to be considered by the select board in their next meeting must be received by the town administrator's office Monday, the week prior to the meeting, from the public, from the department heads, from committees, boards or commissions. Requests to be included on the agenda should use the standard format cover letter with all other documents attached, hard copy or email. Late items are deemed, that are deemed to be emergencies at the town administrator or chair's decision, must have a hundred percent complete documentation to the town administrator no later than noon on Wednesday. The executive assistant will send the meeting agenda to the town clerk and the select board members prior to the close of business on Wednesday for immediate posting. This will ensure compliance with the open meeting law, 48 business hour notice even, even in the case of a Monday holiday. So I added the select board so that everyone is aware that the agenda had been posted and to be aware of, to be ready for the meeting. Sometimes you forget. The executive assistant will provide a draft meeting packet to the select board on Thursday and the updated final version by noon on Tuesday. The executive assistant will post the meeting packet on the website by two on the day of the meeting. Amendments to the agenda after the 48 deadline will not be accepted unless in an emergency as allowable by the open meeting law. The public is encouraged to and may comment on any agenda item prior to the meeting, either directly to the select board or through the town administrator using the contact information provided on the website. The recording secretary will provide draft minutes of the meeting to the clerk of the select board for review within seven calendar days. The clerk of the select board will edit, provide proposed final version of the minutes back to the recording secretary within seven day, calendar days. The recording secretary will review for final completeness, update the meeting minutes status spreadsheet. This is something that must be held in the TA's office? Okay. Let me finish reading and then we'll go through. On the minutes, uh, and forward the minutes to the executive assistant for inclusion in the next available agenda and packet. The executive assistant will upload the approved minutes to the website promptly. I made a change in my head that that should be the town clerk. I'd like to make that the town clerk and I'll explain that after. The TA's office will inform of the, the town clerk of any select board action on personnel appointments. The town administrator will maintain logs of all votes and action items from each select board meeting. And the town administrator will undertake completion of all biz, all business. Just the business voted upon or other actions directed by the select board and report status update at the next meeting. So let's start with Catherine. Ms. Minutes, your question, your comment was?
The sheet, spreadsheet that you referred to was just my personal spreadsheet that I shared with people so they don't have to keep asking me. I'm trying to keep it up to date. It might answer your question, it might not.
Mm-hmm.
It's been mine.
Oh, so that's
Putting it in, changing some of the, get that, talk about, talk about this.
So the recording secretary will view for completeness. So the updating the minute, minute, meeting minutes status spreadsheet is your personal way that you do this?
Yeah.
So in the policy really, we're going to have the recording secretary review for final completeness and forward to the executive secretary. Right?
That's fine because it gets very confusing.
I would agree with taking that out. Is that good with you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't know where that spreadsheet went. Now I know. It's, it's yours.
The minutes to the town clerk?
No, because you, the recording secretary would set, update them and forward them to the executive assistant for inclusion. Once approved, that's the next question, then they need to be posted on the website. Right? Um, and I believe the town clerk posts all the minutes to the website?
I send the select board minutes to Michelle. I'd love to send them to the town clerk.
But why, why don't all the minutes be done down there? I, I don't know. It just seems like if that's part of that, the job as a town clerk, you, you're posting minutes, you're posting agendas, you're posting minutes. Why not? Right. So I just, I just, it just seems like it's a little bit clearer if all the agendas and all the minutes are posted to the website via one, one office.
One person responsible.
One person responsible. So that's just a change. You can think about that.
I can.
Were there any other questions? Did you guys have any other things on that that you liked or didn't like?
No, I like input on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
I think before we had the opportunity to put a input in that was built in, but we had to actively remember to do that. And I think when you're not the chair and you're not planning for each meeting, you're just getting information and following and doing it. It was hard to think that far ahead.
Well, I couldn't call them if I wanted to ask.
Right. So it all goes through, it all goes through that office anyway. Um, but I think sometimes if you see the agenda that the, the chair and the TA are working on because they have this knowledge of what's going on and then if it comes to you, you can say, oh, wait a minute, wait, this is, reminds me, we never got back to, I want to add this. It might not get on that agenda. Right?
Right.
Because it's the chairs. Just, but it might be on the following agenda. And I think that helps you to, to think of things.
I think one of the, uh, few things from experience is the chair needs to, uh, have the opportunity to make the final agenda adjustments. So when you talk about deadlines for the departments and, uh, the other select board members and the public from Monday, that the chair and the TA need to have a meeting after that, after everything's done on that middle Monday
Mm-hmm.
to finalize the agenda. Because, you know, in here you talk about everything is due in on Monday.
Yep.
And the, uh, executive assistant is going to, uh,
Post it on Wednesday.
Post it on Wednesday. But in between there, there has to be a decision from the chair to say, this is the final.
So that was there for Tuesday.
Yes.
Yeah, I see that there. So that would be a Tuesday meeting.
Originally was, you know, we've been using the Tuesday meeting between the chair and the TA. It's essentially, it's, yeah, it looks good, go ahead.
To find, to, to finalize.
Finalize, yeah.
Okay.
Or he would just give you a stamp and be like, yep.
Yep. Yep.
That's not what I wanted.
I didn't say that. Okay.
I'll be initialled right here. Sorry.
All right. And, uh, any, any correspondence as opposed to important? I mean, I, it's not every, but any correspondence from a resident or anything should probably be
Yes.
brought up.
Yep.
Um, so the public comment, this is, this is our only policy on public comment, right? We don't have another policy for public comment.
The, it's, uh, on the website. It was established in the, um, October 20 select board vote.
Mm-hmm. October, our, our select board?
Yeah, our
Okay.
Not, not this three here.
Okay.
Previous, previous.
Okay.
When we had, uh,
Right.
We were moving to a single
So since then, there's been a law, a, a case, a situation, um, and on the website, on the webinar today with, uh, the MMA, they stated that, um, you really want to make sure that your policy
Yeah, because we've had the Supreme Court, that Supreme Court ruling.
Yeah, with the South Borough decision. So the public call, policy, the public comment should have very little limitations, including any civility. Avoid limiting any residents' rights. Um, yeah. So that's why I think it's important that it says on any topic, not any allowable topic, they can speak on any topic they like. We can put a limit on it of time. And it's important that the select board, um, has a policy on how they're going to respond to that. And I think that should go through the chair. But the primary piece would be not to respond and not to deliberate because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah. So certainly you don't want the public comment period turning into a debate.
Correct.
So that it's a public comment that we receive the information and then it's out there. And then the, uh, chair over the next two week period can decide what to do with that piece of information.
Okay. That's good.
That's good.
So I'll, I'll pick up all my changes and I'll change them to you and then we'll
I'll give them to me.
And then, um, we should read it and then vote on it next, next time? Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. One of my fun little activities is editing. Right? Uh, what's next?
We're done.
Oh, my. Oh, my. What's our next, um, so we're meeting on the ninth and the 23rd? And then the special election is on the 27th, which means
Well, actually you have one this Friday.
We're meeting Friday.
So we're meeting Friday. Where you got it posted?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So it posted, because we've got to accept the gifts.
So we meeting, what time are we meeting? Before or during?
Before. Five minutes before.
Four fifty-five.
So that, what is the date? Why can't I get to the date? April 28th, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we're meeting at four forty-five and we're meeting
Four fifty-five.
Four fifty-five?
Yeah.
Are we meeting there?
Yes.
So we'll be right there?
Yeah.
At the, at the Arbor Day event. Okay.
Just to make the form, accept until the gifts, so that we can just move forward.
Okay. Um, and then we have our next two meetings and then we have the special election, which would only be good if lots of people take out nomination papers for those two positions.
I think
I've said that a lot.
And you've got, uh, Memorial Day on the 29th.
The Memorial, yeah.
And June 14th and, uh,
June 14th.
And maybe June 19th.
June 19th will be something. And then usually we do a
Are we going to the first and third on?
So the 27th is the election and then you have the week of July 4th.
Fourth is on what day of week?
The fourth is on a Tuesday.
So, uh,
So do we want to switch and do the
11th?
11th and the 25th and then go the 25th and then still on the second and the fourth. How do we get back to the first?
You won't make it until, uh, August because you got the Fourth of July is going to kill, kills that for, kills it for July, right?
Right.
Probably shouldn't have a meeting that week.
No. So let's, let's go to the, let's plan for the 11th. That'll be the first meeting with the five. So before then, we need to, we only have a few meetings really to, to pull in some decisions on how we're going to move forward with the five. Okay. All right. Anything else?
Do you, um, anticipate in June an additional workshop meeting or, uh, if we have extended conversations on three to five?
Um, I had, I don't know what's on the agendas. Do you think it's going to take more than what's on the, if we could get, if we could get someone to come?
Well, you
To talk to us.
Remember too, in May, by the end of May, we're going to have at least an hour plus time as we make all the appointments of the employees. And then in June, you have two dates to work through all the committee appointments and so forth. And I think as we almost did last year, if we just do it on two different dates, all the employee jobs on one night in May, and then all the citizen volunteers on one meeting in June.
Committees and boards.
And we'll get that done.
Yes. Yep. So we need another day is what you're thinking. So we could really hash out, rehash out the three to five.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. So as we get closer, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you guys all around in June? Everybody going to be around?
Uh, the weekend after the Memorial Day, I'm going to be driving to Rochester.
The weekend after Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, let's do it more in the middle of the month.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm thinking like around the 15th.
Right. We're just keeping a reserve, right?
Okay. Yep. And we'll work on something like that. Okay. Anything else? I'll be better